Have everyone with us so far this morning? Okay, at this time, I'm going to call the Anacortes City Council Special Meeting, our Budget Retreat to Order. And I'm going to... Can we all hear? We'll do a sound check first. Everybody on board can hear everybody? Everybody can't? I guess let me know. Email me if you can't hear me. Or I can... And then, Marcia, would you take the role?
Mr. Carter?
President.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Walters?
Here.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath? Do we know if we expect her today?
We expect her. I know Mr. McDougal will be in and out. He has a work conflict, but...
Ms. Moulton?
Here.
Mr. McDougal? We'll watch for him. Mr. Miller?
Here.
And Christine has joined us.
Great. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, at this time, I'm going to turn the retreat over to our Finance Director, Steve Hogland, and he's going to start out with the budget schedule.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, thank you for joining us this morning. I wanted... I need to be able to share my screen, so hopefully... This is... Hopefully, that's something Mitchell can help me with. Thank you, Mitchell. Okay, can you see my... There we go. Hopefully, you can see my screen now. And I'll pull... I'll pull some of these files over as we talk about them. So as the mayor said, I wanted to touch base just kind of briefly on the budget schedule, so we can get this out on our website, so everybody has an idea. And this is... This tends to be pretty fluid until we get into the fall timeframe. But here we are, our first item, May 27, Zoom Remote Budget Meeting. So the next steps in the budget process will be getting our IT inventories out. The departments do it. They get an inventory list from the IT department. They verify that inventory, and then the computers that are eligible for replacement. We go and process those. So this is different from last year. Oh, excuse me. It's different from last year in that both our IT department and ERNR, we deferred all of the requests that we could. So we bought a few computers last year and few vehicles, and that will be changing this year. But then you can kind of see through the rest of the schedule. Once we get into July, we'll start doing the nuts and bolts of the budget, start putting our payroll, insurance, our equipment rental rates into the budget. And August 1st is when we're planning on getting the worksheets out to the departments. We'll work on revenue projections through the summer. And then, kind of similar to past normal years, we were later last year than we normally are, but plan on going to council on September 12th for the mayor's budget message. We'll have our public hearing October 11th for the revenue sources, and then these timeframes in October for council to do their work, start looking at the budget. So we have two budget hearings scheduled right now for the 18th and 25th of October. We have plenty of time, though. I anticipate that will change, and we'll add some additional meetings before the end of the year. So reminder that the property tax levy is due to the county by November 30, and that's adopted by council resolution. And then, the budget itself is required to be adopted by the end of the year. So the... Look at that, right on schedule, 9:05. So 9:05 Retreat Goals. What I wanted to talk about, kind of the goals and deliverables, we talked about just a little bit in the original memo that went out, but we wanted to make sure, I wanted to remind council of some of the issues that we dealt with last year that have carried over, and then make sure that we had a clear understanding of what council's expectations are for the coming budget, the coming year. And that's, if you have, like, expectations or goals for the budget process, that's important, as well as, you know, the budget deliverables that will be adopted in the budget itself.
Steve?
Sir?
Would you zoom in a little bit? Maybe to page width. People at home might be watching as well.
At this time, oh yeah, that's true. That's true.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
So, on the agenda, a couple of things I wrote under existing budget issues, ERNR funding, fiber, and then the 2020 budget rollover. So as far as ERNR goes, I wanted to share that with council. So this is just a spreadsheet that we use to identify the funding amounts for the different departments that are required for the equipment rentals. ERNR stands for Equipment Rental and Reserve, and that's the name of the of the fund that we process those internal payments for, and actual ownership of those vehicles is in Fund 501.
What is our balance in that account today?
Good question, Mayor. It's one I should have anticipated. I think we have around $9 million in the the equipment rental... The balance for purchasing of future vehicles. So...
And we've accumulated that over the last seven years, correct?
Yes, yes, we've... Yeah, council, some of the council members may remember that we did a budget. We did an operating transfer of over $2 million. I want to say it was back in the 2015 timeframe. And at that point, I think that got us 80% of our requirements at that point, and we've been funding... So that got us up to 80% of where we should be, you know, 100% being the ideal. But then we were accumulating 100% at that point. So the fund is, since then, has been very healthy. It is still very healthy. What we did last year, when we did that budget amendment to prepare for the COVID impacts, we implemented a budget reduction in ERNR of the replacement charges. So the charges, like, looking at this $20,303, for example, that's in the Parks Department. That's made up of both replacement charges that are collected, set aside in, you know, set aside in the bank for future replacement of vehicles. But part of that $20,000 monthly charge is also made up of paying for the shop expenses, like the staff costs, the supply costs, things of that nature. So when we went through that budget reduction last year, we cut, you can see, all of these replacement charges, and this is... So this is for 2021. This is looking at 2020. So we do have an inflator, so these numbers have changed a little bit, but you get the idea. We cut all of those replacement charges out of the departments that rely most heavily on tax funding. We, so we did that probably through the year last year, and then we carried that over through the existing budget in 2021. So if you look at in 2020 numbers, that's 787,000. So with the inflator into this year's number, it's over 900,000. So it's a significant number. The way we were able to manage that and make it work is we were able to defer the majority of our equipment replacements last year and this year. So it got us a year and a half of relief in that area. But in 2022, that's something we'll want to implement again, so we don't fall, so we don't fall further behind. So that's something I'm looking to get taken care of in this next budget, is getting Equipment Rental back in place. The Fiber Fund. So council will remember the fiber. I wanted to share... This is a spreadsheet that Philip put together.
Steve, can I just ask you a quick question to what you said? Basically, you, we... We pushed off any of the replacements because of the budget and because of COVID and everything else. Was there any major impacts, meaning that we fell short just simply because the equipment wasn't updated?
Right. No, it's a great question, and we worked closely with the shop, with shop manager Will Ludeman last year and during the budget development for 2021. And there were a couple of pieces of equipment that were purchased that were, you know, critical needs. But he identified what those were that were critical for continued operations of the city. And what we deferred out were things that he felt we could get by another year with just maybe a little more maintenance. But he didn't feel what we put off put any of our departments at risk for either safety or a level of service. So this is a balance, or a spreadsheet we put together just to calculate interest costs. This goes back to our line of credits, four and a half million dollar line of credit that we're anticipating using this year, 2021, for the continued build-out of fiber network, the city broadband network. And this, it's a three-year line of credit at 1.75%, so it's a very favorable interest rate to use this money in that short term. In that short-term means. But it is accruing interest. We do have minimum interest payments requirement every, required every three months, and this keeps keeps track of this, keeps track of that. And I've, we've shared this with the fiber department, happy to share it with council if you want to take a look at it. But it's something we've started to look at, just to get that, make sure that interest payment is on our radar and prepare for paying that down over the next, you know, over the next several years. But the interest payment is actually twice, twice a year. So you can see at the end of the... At the end of the year, once that's all paid, once that line of credit is exhausted, the interest payment is less than $100,000 a year. So, I mean, it's real money, but but considering the, you know, the amount of capital that allows us to use, it's a very favorable rate.
Mayor here?
Yes, Mr. Walters.
Are we jumping right in, or are we asking for permission to speak?
You can jump in today. I think that's appropriate.
Okay, so my question here is, is that, that interest payment is going to increase as we borrow more from the line of credit, right?
Yes, and it builds on, yeah, exactly, and it builds on itself. You can see in the model how that, the interest rate does increase on an ongoing basis if nothing is done to it.
What's column F there? Is that the amount we're borrowing?
This is the running total. So you can...
So aren't we going to pull more from that line of credit, or?
Well, so this, the way it's set up, we show the draw amounts in column C. So, and just kind of on a simple basis, we're anticipating using that entire line of credit this year in 2021. So just kind of on a linear basis, we spread that out through the second half of the year.
Okay, I got it.
Looks like it tops out at about $8,000 a month, which equates to just under 200 customers, roughly. At least on the, or no, 400 customers, based upon our revenue profile of about $50 a month per customer.
So the last thing I wanted to touch base on, some of the rollover issues from the COVID, the COVID-induced budget amendment. There we go. So last year, we did that, a budget amendment around mid-year, which greatly reduced, you know, in anticipation of the coming recession, it greatly reduced our expenditures in a number of a number of departments, and some of those carried over through to the current year, 2021. And this, I just wanted to kind of try and keep this on the front burner. I know that, these things are important, I know, to all of our council members. But these are positions that we had pre-COVID that were eliminated in the current, in the current budget, that we eventually, you know, the ideal would be to get those back into the future operating budget. And that's a position out of the museum. We had a position that was eliminated out of the Parks budget. Earlier this year, we did a budget amendment to bring that position back. The Parks Department has sufficient cash reserves to pay for that position for, you know, some number of years, but eventually, we would like to get, you know, a continuing flow of resources to pay for that that position. And then the library has three positions that were eliminated from its budget. So those are carryover in our current budget that I just, you know, don't want to lose sight of.
Steve, this is Emily, and Jeff can step in too, but those library assistant positions were added back in this year.
Well, we have, we have, these are the positions that were, that were eliminated from the budget. We do have a couple that we have open for attrition, or that we gained through attrition, and we held open through the hiring freeze. But we do have their, you know, and they're partial FTEs. This is, the librarian was a full FTE, but these positions are not currently in the current fiscal year budget.
Is that correct, Jeff?
We hired back two library assistants, part-time. So there should be, there should be a librarian position that wasn't filled and a library page position.
Okay, all right. I'll start quiet as soon as I can.
Okay. So any questions at this point? I want to get into the council memos and those items that council brought up. So this is a kind of a simple matrix. I... Oh, sorry, I did have a couple of other things. I apologize. I should stick, just stick my script here. Okay, so I wanted to touch base on a couple of things that will have bearing on the coming budget. So we talked a little bit at year-end last year about our major revenue streams, and we have three major tax revenue streams that, you know, provide the majority of our tax revenues. We have a number, a large number of tax revenue streams that support our operations, but our three largest are sales tax, utility tax, and property tax, and they're all between four and five million dollars. So, as we talked about late last year, in our private utility tax, so utility tax is made up of private and public, the public being a tax on water sewer, those types of public services. Private utility tax is on the private utilities such as gas, TV, you know, natural gas, not, you know. So natural gas, electricity, cable TV, and phone services. So what we've been seeing for some number of years now is those private utility tax revenues dropping off, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. But there are some things that that are affecting the public utilities as well. We'll talk about a little more, but in water, we've seen, you know, significant decreases in consumption, which has affected sewer as well, and the level of funding out of that. So continuing the discussion about the 2020 budget issues, that 2020 COVID budget amendment at mid-year, we did that to shift resources back to the general fund, to ensure we had sufficient resources to pay for general general services. And a large portion of that was in the Road Maintenance Fund, and as we talked about, Parks, Library, and Museum, all that positions cut, and then a reduction in equipment rental of over $900,000 in replacement charges. So at least at least this equipment rental is something that we'll need to consider in 2022, so we don't start falling behind. And then, you know, ideally, these other issues as well in the 2022 budget. So the fiber line of credits, four and a half million dollars to continue the build-out. It's, you know, the short-term, it's a short-term note, and a repayment plan will need to be administered here in the, in the coming years, and, you know, the next couple, the next couple of years. And then additional funding for fiber may be needed that we'll need to consider in the 2022 budget. So the rainy day fund balance in the general reserve is 5.6 million. Currently, that was adopted by ERNR's 2995. And that's something that we may need to address as we get closer to year-end. We'll talk about this more as we monitor the budget through year-end 2021, but but it's possible that our operating cash will be in a position where we'll need to take a look at that, at that rainy day fund. And then, I'm sure most of you have heard something about this. There's concerns about about CPI increasing faster than it has been the last, you know, the last decade or so, where it's been around 2-3%. I think the April indicator annualized put it over 5%. And with the amount of cash that's cash and kind of, you know, buildup that that's in the, in the economy, there's a potential for a higher rate of CPI than than we've seen in the past that we'll need to, you know, consider at some level.
Steve, I have a question. On the looking, you know, looking at the rainy day fund, whether we need to change policy on having access to that? Would that versus maybe not funding ERNR for another year be a better option, because we have 9 million there? And we could still fund new equipment and still have several million, I mean, several million left in ERNR? I mean, I don't know, is one better than the other if we needed cash? I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can look at that. And it is a trade-off. When we were going through the Great Recession back in 2008, 2009, that's something that we did. We managed our ERNR on a pay, kind of on a pay-as-you-go basis. We just looked at the equipment that was needed the coming year and carved it out of our budget that way. I mean, it's not really, it's not really ideal.
But even if we needed 2 million out of ERNR this next year to replace equipment, that still leaves with 7 million there, and we still then maybe wouldn't have to change, you know, maybe not touch our rainy day fund. So, and maybe I'm being too simplistic in my thinking, but anyway, just a thought.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Hey, Gear?
Yes, for Young.
No, I think, just to make sure I'm clear on the point that you were making. You're saying we have enough money, we may have enough money in ERNR, and that, you know, so to with all the money that's in there, we might be able to use some of that money someplace else where it's more needed, given that ERNR still would have a great level of funding, even if we use some of it for other needs. Is that correct?
Well, what I meant was that not funding it, which would free up cash, so we wouldn't have to tap our rainy day fund, because the rainy day funds there are like when there are big earthquake comes. You know, some unknown. I thought, I thought if COVID wasn't a rainy daytime, I didn't know what was, but Steve reminded me, if the bridges go down, that would truly be a rainy day.
Yeah.
Anyway, just...
No, I like the idea of what you were proposing, because I think that it really is a bit of an efficient use of the funds unless we have a greater need we can anticipate for it, and I don't believe we do.
And it might be worth having a broader conversation about this at a city council, maybe a study session where we can, you know, talk about our those fund balance issues and our policy.
That would be great, Steve.
Steve, I got a question about which, about revenues, and I don't know if you're going to get more detailed into that. I'm looking at the agenda. Were you going to go through those slides that you put in the packet?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so those are coming next?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, it's just a little more detail on the crystal ball of what internal water recycling options mean. And I imagine that means reduction in utility tax.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Looking forward to that. Thanks.
Before we move off the discussion about rainy day versus ERNR, if I recall correctly, there are some small tweaks to the rainy day fund policy that we might make that don't really affect the rainy day fund. There are a couple of areas where we may be saving more than really makes sense because of the way the policy reads. Is that still correct, Steve?
Yeah, it's a fair point, Mr. Walters. The language, so the way the policy is set up, we do a calculation of, I think it's five of our operating funds, the current expense fund, you know, Parks, Cemetery, Library, Road, I think Road Maintenance and EMS. So we take 20% of the expenditures for those funds, and that's what's not really defined, is what the expenditure, does that mean, actual expenditures or budgeted expenditures for the coming year, for the past year. So we have maximized in the past, we've kind of maximized that rainy, that rainy day fund by our interpretation of that policy, where we could base it on the, you know, instead of the coming expenditure year, we can base it on the last completed year, maybe net of, you know, depreciation or capital, things of that nature that they get moved out of the operating statement. So it's possible that there could be some tweaks that would free up a little more cash.
And that might not necessarily be our objective in making the tweaks, but we do need to look at that regardless of whether we want to draw on it, just to make sure that it's being interpreted in a consistent way all the time, and that the auditors would agree as well.
Yeah, yeah, fair point.
And you bringing that, bringing that to council, I think, is a great idea to look at those tweaks from the perspective of your interpretation of it, you know, what are the areas that you're having trouble interpreting? I think that's what council should be able to help you out with. It's like, those are, those are what I, that's what I'm thinking of when you're talking about making tweaks to 2995. So, you know, make sure to write those down and then bring it to council, what you think the areas are hard to interpret. And I think it's our job to try to make it easier to interpret.
Sure, absolutely. And it's a good, it's a good point. These are conversations that I think are important to have before we get into the meat of the budget season, so we'll do that. This is year-end chart included. We talked about this at the end of last year. It shows our major revenue streams. You can see the top three, the top three bars here, property tax, utility tax, and sales tax. And then, we'll talk about each of those a little bit more. So I wanted to talk about the public utility tax. So this is the tax charged on on public utilities, which are the city utilities, water, sewer, storm, solid waste. It's the utility tax applied against the gross utility bill, which includes the utility tax. So if you look at the tax rate, it's actually slightly higher than 7% because that calculation of utility tax is considered part of the gross bill. The utility tax on public utilities is controlled by city council. Water and sewer charges include a consumption charge, which the storm drain and solid waste don't have. So those those amounts fluctuate, depend on the amount of consumption. And then sewer consumption is calculated off of water consumption. There's not an easy way to have a sewer meter. So we calculate it based off of the water consumption, and that's net of the average winter water use. So our current rates are 7% against water, sewer, and storm, and then 12% against solid waste. And we split that with, or split that between the general fund, the state, and the road maintenance fund. So in 2020, compared to 2019, because, you know, of COVID, the water consumption decreased 2.7% from 2019, and because we have such a large utility, 2.7% is a small number, but what that, the amount of consumption that represents is quite a large number. So looking at 2020 for the entire year compared to 2019, the industrial consumption was down 15.5 million cubic feet. The other wholesale customers down 4.8 million, and then commercial down 4.2 million. And when you run these decreases in consumption through the cost structure of the water fund and the sewer fund, that's almost what, sorry, I should have done the math on this. So over $400,000 in lost revenue in the water fund, and over $400,000 in lost consumption charges in the sewer fund. And then because of the utility tax structure against those, that's a loss of nearly $60,000. that's a loss of nearly $60,000 in utility tax to the general fund. So that was for the entire year 2020. And what was concerning, looking at the first quarter of 2021, I apologize, this data is a little bit aged now. In finance, we've been kind of dedicating the past month or over the past month to annual reports. So I haven't updated these, but through the first quarter of 2021, the industrial consumption compared to fiscal year 20, first quarter was down 19.3 million cubic feet, wholesale down 363,000 and commercial down over 900,000. Resulting in, you know, lost revenue to the water fund of over $300,000. Lost revenue to the sewer fund of 91,000 and then lost revenue to the general fund in utility tax of $33,000. That's just for the first quarter.
What you, what you're also showing us is the continuation of the effects of COVID and what it's been on the economy and everything else that we're going on, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I just wanted to ask for clarity. So cubic foot consumption is down in industrial, in the industrial sector more than it's down in the whole year of 2020 already?
Yes, that's right. That's right. And I, I can't say we looked at consumption in April and that has turned around a little bit. So that, that significant decrease has not continued. So it's not, at least through April, it's not decreasing at an accelerating rate as it was the first quarter.
So I, on, on the commercial piece on that, from the refineries aspect, I've had a couple of conversations. And they will continue that their efforts on recycling. So they're, they're going to continue to try to do a better job of water usage. But the other piece, the COVID piece, they really believe will come back. We weren't flying jet airplanes last year. So a lot of the refining just stopped. And their use of our water to do that process stopped, but that's coming back. So I don't know if we, we have a sense of how much recycling will affect this long term. I mean, that's the piece to focus on, I think.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's in this text box on the site here. That's one of the things I, I wrote in here. We don't have an idea of how much that reduction is from, you know, the refineries, internal recycling efforts versus reduced refining, but, but that, that is part of it. And then some of our commercial enterprises, I guess, I'm just concerned that, you know, maybe there's some, some level of those commercial customers just won't recover from COVID, won't be coming back. On the private utilities, so the majority, over 90% of our private utility tax is made up of these sectors that you can see right here on electric bills, cable TV bills, natural gas and then telecom, which is the, the internet kind of based, you know, companies that do allow for taxation and phones, both cell phone and, you know, the old, the old school hardline phone. So the utility taxes on these, the private, these private utility tax rates are controlled either at the state or federal level. They're outside of council control. And looking at some of this information, we don't have as much history on our private information as we do some of the other information. But you can see over the last few years, this trend in electric has been, you know, dropped down in the middle year and then bumped back up. Cable TV has been consistently dropping. Natural gas seems to be kind of consistently increasing. And those telecom bills are consistently decreasing. Commercial solid waste is a much smaller portion, but that consistently increases as, as well. But instead of seeing, like 10 years ago, we were seeing 6, 8% increases in utility tax. What we've seen the last couple of years is closer to 1%. That's what it was last year, was 1% increase year over year.
Steve, are we levying the maximum or is there a maximum utility tax on solid waste?
That's, yeah, that's a good question. I, I don't know. I'm sorry. I don't know the answer to that.
And what about residential solid waste?
Yeah, so, right, in the, in the public, in the public arena, the public utility tax arena, these are controlled by city council. So those, those rates, I don't believe there are caps on those, on those rates, water, sewer, et cetera. I believe those are controlled by city council and don't actually have a, a maximum. Oh, one other thing I'll point out in the wholesale customers. So those are, that's water we sell to other purveyors. We have the industrials, which are the refineries. Other wholesale customers are other water purveyors that we sell water to, Cityville Carver, LeConner, PUD, The Tribe. And we don't charge utility tax on, on, on those sales. It used to, actually, there was a change in this, in the state statutes a few years ago. It used to be unallowable to charge utility tax on those other water purveyors. There was a change in the, in code a few years back that does allow that. Though the city of Anacortes has not changed our practice of not charging utility tax on those other water purveyors.
Steve, before you get off of the utility tax, I just wanted to maybe highlight or, I don't know if that's ask a question. But electric, the electric one is the only one that doesn't make too much sense going, you know, down and then back up. So maybe we can look at that one. Natural gas makes sense as we are building, building more houses. Are those the, the primary measures that you're, that you're looking at? I would, I would think the natural gas going up is tied to new, new construction primarily. Is that, is that how you're measuring that?
Yeah, so actually that, this is measured just off of the gross, the grocery receipts from that, from those taxes. And that makes, that makes a lot of sense. You know, we, we build between 60 and 100 houses here in Anacortes every year. So that would make sense for those to continue increasing like that. I would have expected the same in electric. I, I can't really explain that, the drop in 2019.
Okay. Yeah, and just something to look at, because I know this is one that we're trying to predict the eventual decrease and how much that decrease is going to be. Or, or maybe other, maybe natural gas and electric balances out the decrease in cable TV and telecom taxes. So again, I, I know something that you'll be looking at.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. This is just a quick chart I put together, looking at the last several years of staff costs, just looking at the actuals. And what I, what I was trying to illustrate here, so just looking, projecting forward to 2022. If we, you know, just kind of, kind of base our projections on historical norms. I'm just trying to illustrate that, that we need to generate about a million more per year in general revenues to support that ongoing staff cost. So, you know, just the natural progression of CPI. It's a, it's a pretty big, it's a pretty big bite just to meet the, the ongoing needs of the city. And this is those, those three major revenue streams that we're, we've been talking about, property tax, sales tax, utility tax. So property tax is limited to 1% increase per year. But on top of that, any new, new properties added to the tax rolls increases that balance as well. So that's why it generally runs about two and a half percent per year increase. It's the 1% plus another bit for the new properties added to the tax rolls. Sales tax, I highlighted in red here, these two years that were kind of skewed by the, the high school project. And then utility tax are, are changes here. But the, the sales tax is our, that's really what we're relying on to, to bring those, you know, those increases that we need to support those ongoing operations. So looking at those, the total of these big three from, from year to year. We had a big, you know, 12.8% increase in 18 over 17, largely due to the high school project. This, this decrease, you know, this is the high school project that kind of skews all this. It was down 3.6%. You know, but our sales tax in 2019 was still, you know, 600,000 more than it was two years, two years earlier. And then in 2020, it kind of got back to normal, but was still on a downward decrease. So take this with a, you know, with a grain of salt. But this is, this is one of the pictures that I wanted to leave council with, just keeping in mind, you know, that ongoing cost that we have to meet. And that comes primarily through these, these big three revenue streams. So if you're happy to, if anybody's got any questions or anything at this, at this time, before we move on to getting into the council expectations for, for the budget. Mr. Miller, you had some specific questions about the utility tax. Did we answer those at this, at this time?
Yeah, I, I think you got them. You know, the, the challenge that I think I mentioned to you every year is the getting that crystal ball, getting that crystal ball right. We know what, you highlighted some of the big expenses, like the staff expenses every, every year. You know, approximately a million dollars. We saw that in the last budget. So it's, it really helps certainly me for you to do the best, the best crystal ball analysis of what those, what those revenue streams are going to look like. As I'm, I'm obviously a proponent of not spending more than what we have coming in, like I think normal people. So anyway, that, you covered all the, all the concerns and, and trying to estimate maybe, you know, what the, talk a little more to the refineries about what they estimate their, when they get back to normal. People, people flying all over the place, making that jet fuel. But how, how much of an impact is that recycling piece going to be? How much do they think that's going to impact their water consumption? Things like that will be, those kind of details will be helpful as you work your crystal ball magic. So, yeah, no, you, you covered, you covered it all. Thanks.
Okay, so I did include a copy of our seven broad budget goals. A lot of our council members were at this meeting a few years ago when we put this together back in those good old days when we can meet in person and spend several hours together talking about, about budget. But then, so I appreciate council getting, getting your memos in. We, we combined them all into, into the packet here. I hope everybody had a, a chance to, to look at them. I'm going to skip down, I'm going to skip down a little bit. So I wanted to, I wanted to show the, so the, I tried to, I tried to put together a matrix of the major items that council members included. And please correct me if I got these wrong. I did some interpretations on, on some of these. I, you know, tried to fit some of these in with, with other council member expectations. So if they don't fit exactly, please, please let me know. And then I tried to identify which were items that I thought council was intending that they be identified for the current budget period, for the upcoming 2022 budget. And then which of the items were kind of a longer term, maybe even more philosophical type of issues that, that we need to talk about.
Steve? So I, I, I think that this spreadsheet here is useful for the purpose of categorizing some of the requests. But it might not have much utility in terms of categorizing council members and their priorities, because we weren't presented with a menu. So we might, we might check boxes or order those priorities in different ways based on that menu. If, if we were presented with that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I wouldn't want department heads or, or you or the mayor to take away that this is for sure what our, our, our council priorities are as individual members.
Okay, got it.
Absolutely.
And just to follow Mr. Walter's point, you know, I thought it was great to give an indication. There were some things that, again, not having the menu, I had some additional check marks I wanted to put in, such as ensure social services, restore police and fire volunteer programs, port event center, continue to build out of the trail and ensure multifamily infrastructure. So I totally get it, but it was, it was good and helpful to see what others are thinking about as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Young. So I did want to take this opportunity to give council a, a chance to either explain their, you know, their positions, their expectations, or to refine what we have here. So, and I, I carved out an hour for just this kind of general discussion. And I thought that would be at least how we would start is based on everybody getting a, the chance to clarify their, their memos or their expectations. So if that makes, if that makes sense, I guess, I'd like to start that now. If, if everybody is ready for that, or if that makes sense to everybody, or if you have other ideas, please, please let me know. But that's kind of a, kind of carved out this next hour for council to clarify their expectations.
So moving forward, how much time does each council person have then?
So I was thinking, so I just, I was thinking of an hour. And so I just did, you know, eight minutes because seven times eight is 56. So, but that's what I had in mind. So.
All right. Well, I'll jump right in since, you know, you know, I may save some of my eight minutes to might surprise some of you. But what's important to me really is, I think that all the departments are really doing such a, a great job of managing the workforce and the stuff that's important. So I didn't put that on. What I wanted to put was something that I, I didn't think that we were focusing on that I thought was very crucial to the city. And that was cultural inclusion and just making sure that we're reaching out. We have a diverse community here in Anacortes, even though we may not always see it, we do. We have people that are coming in and out from diverse places, jobs. And we just really want to make sure that we're preparing ourselves for that future and the people that are here. And I think it's important that we undergird part of the principles we're using with this as a basis versus a social issue. Those are two very different contexts. And I think that the importance of training and helping that process along with thought processes, whether that's, whether that's conscious well as unconscious bias. I just think that the training will bode well for us as a city. And anybody that's attempting to come, whether we're talking to anyone or any of the issues that may come up, it is a critical component, because the world is talking now. And I just want to make sure we're ready. And I think that that's very important.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Young.
The reason I brought that up is that in order to push this issue forward in a good way, we have to allocate some resources to that process. And that's what I'm advocating for. That's why I indicated this is so important.
Thank you. Okay, who else would like to jump in at this time?
All right, Mayor Gere.
Yeah, go ahead now.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll take it sad. Again, I, I think, I think this is a, a good process. I, I'm just speaking for myself, but, you know, I don't see this as obviously the end all be all of what I, what I think should be the budget priorities, but I think it's a good. And, and Steve, if you could send this slide out, that would be great at some point, just to kind of see what kind of consensus that the council has moving forward. I think it's, it's helpful. But anyway, I, I kind of laid out what I thought the budget priority should be. And they shouldn't be any surprise to most, public safety, infrastructure and community enhancement, and then effective governance. So on the public safety side, I, I think, and I, you know, I, I know the departments will, will weigh in. But I think based on the workload of what we've seen over the last couple of years, is probably an additional commissioned police officer. And this is before even deciphering what I believe is going to be lots of legislation. Because typically a 24/7 schedule is pretty easy to write and you write it with 20%, you know, training, leave, sick, all that stuff. But then when the training piece goes up significantly, again, you're going to have to rework, wicker that math problem. Plus our growing population, something we'll have to look at. I put in, restore the citizens patrol, even though that's not a huge budget, although if it needs. I put in, restore the citizens patrol, even though that's not a huge budget, although if it needs money, I would support that. I think that's an element to come back. Needs to come back sooner rather than later. The three firefighters for the two in one out capability from station one. I think we've covered that with a safer grant. And, and continue our partnership with Anacortes Family Center. I got to see that in action a couple of weeks ago is pretty, pretty impressive. Already the APD working with the family center. But I, but again, we should consider, I know the HASP committee is still working on some good stuff, seeing about what other things we can look at like impact teams. So considering another point two five FTE to, to support that. And then, you know, there, obviously you can read, I don't, I don't want to read all, read all of this unless staff has some questions, clarifications of what, of, of the things that I wrote down. Infrastructure, I think quite a number of council members wants to make sure that we're doing the right amount of roads, road and street maintenance. 1.8 million is probably not enough. Getting the right measurements in there, I think are important. Obviously wastewater treatment, water treatment plant, grant opportunities. I don't know if I like to use the terminology, but money falling from the sky. We don't want to miss out on those opportunities as, as there's a significant amount of infrastructure, money coming. Again, we had that long discussion about the wastewater treatment plant, but there will be opportunities that will fit, I think with the 2022 budget. And then fiber. Again, these are just some ideas. I, you know, don't panic fiber department, but, but just, you know, we should rather than think about hiring FTEs for fiber to get the bill, we need to have some, some more targets. I know we continually put targets on, on fiber, but it is a unique municipal business. And having targets like 2,000 customers at the end of 2022 and then back off from that target to say, okay, how do you, how do we get, is that a, is that a good target first of all? And how do we get to that target? Do we need additional FTEs kind of thing? And then how to pay off and, and paying off that loan and how we're going to do that. And again, the grants out there as well. And I'm looking at my time, community enhancement. Again, do we need to put money away for, for easements? For other construction projects that, that make, whether it's a community center or just event center, those kinds of things. Do we need to start putting away money aside for those type of capital projects? And then government, efficient government. Again, I like the, the idea of Socrata. Not sure that's the, the, the right way to go. But definitely am interested to hear more about that. So I think that was a broad brush of the things that I was thinking about as we kick off the budget process.
Thanks, Matt. Bruce, I, I guess you're here with us now and I know you have a tight schedule today. Do you want to share your thoughts?
Sure. I'm actually at a spot where I'm in between calls.
Oh, yay.
Yeah, I think on mine, I've got some checkmarks very similar to a number of other council members. The fully funded pavement management is pretty self-explanatory. I love the idea of, well, I love the, the good progress we've made on with the Anacortes Family Center and the the half a headcount social worker. And I like the idea of maybe expanding upon that to a, a full headcount. On the fiber build out, actually I like Matt's idea of, you know, setting, setting specific targets for number of customers by end of certain years and then staff up or, you know, staff accordingly for that. I think we're looking at, you know, because it is a construction project that has an end date. That it's not like any kind of staff up is, you know, years and years and years. It's more like kind of contracts for a couple of years. On the fiber though, I am kind of looking at sort of beyond 2023. I'd love to see us targeting partnerships with other communities like La Conner, like O'Carver. If, if those communities can make use of their, you know, of infrastructure funds that may be coming in and in the next year or so to build their own fiber networks. We have an established operations team that can, can basically, you know, we have an in-house ISP that could run that for them. And that's, that's something I see as sort of like in a 2023 and beyond additional revenue essentially just from, from taking sort of a service charge for offer, operating an ISP on behalf of, say, those other communities, South Fidalgo and Gueymus are also potential. And then I actually, on the longer term, I could put a checkmark for myself under ladder truck at station three as well, a little oversight on my part there because I think those are definite needs long-term.
Thank you, Bruce.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Who else is ready?
Mayor Garrett?
Yes, Carolyn, welcome.
Hi, thanks. So mine was, was pretty, a pretty brief overview of my priorities. I appreciate seeing so many checkmarks in the pavement management, fully funded column as well as social services. Those are messages that we've also received loud and clearly from our constituents. So that's right in line with what we're hearing from our people. And when we talk about pavement program, fully funded, I like to just have a mention of non-motorized transportation and ADA improvements, which Mr. Buck and my friend referred to in his, in his memo to council also. So I think those are really important things to keep in mind. That kind of connectivity for all of our citizens, no matter what physical abilities that they have. I talked about staffing. And so social services being such a big priority for all of us and also our community. The, when I talk about staffing for parks department or the library or the museum, those departments serve a social service function and role as well, very much so in their interface with the community. And that is a great contributor to our public health. Even physical health and mental health, obviously all those things are tied together. So those are also priorities for me because that's part of our social service and quality of life matrix, what makes it great to live here. So, so I know we did some budget cuts necessarily, but we need to not lose sight of how vital those are in a very tangible way. And that is, that's it for me for now. I look forward to the continuing conversation.
Mayor Garrett. Thanks. Morning, everyone. Hey, um, so yeah, I, I appreciate the matrix and kind of being able to read everyone's summary memo ahead of time. And I would just stress, especially for department heads that, you know, this wasn't an exhaustive list. It was a list of us kind of thinking about what was in the forefront of our minds. At kind of that 20,000 foot level and kind, and at least for me, kind of focusing on the things that have a larger, big ticket item and that I'm on committees for. So the R and R fund just seems to me to be a really important thing that we, if we don't fully get back to fully funding it this next year, that it's something that we're aware of because the costs of replacement is going up dramatically. When we look at vehicle replacement and, and the demand and various other types of equipment. So the longer we wait, the longer we defer, the more expensive it will get. So I think that that's a really important thing that we are fully aware of the impact it will have if we kind of kick it down the road. The pavement management program, obviously that's one of those things that I get calls on at least once a week for various places that needs, you know, ongoing maintenance and, and, and work in time. The utility revenue is kind of in relation, not quite, but in relation to the COLA and the wage compression, right? So we've, we've got our revenue coming in and we have our costs going up, but the general public doesn't necessarily see that impact. So how do we, you know, at least try to fully understand what that utility change, the revenue changes are so that we can make good predictions of, of where we're going. The COLA and wage compression is something that just came out of personnel committee. You know, as the, as the union contracts are being renegotiated, we're seeing less of a, a compression between union and non-union contracts. And so to, to incentivize folks to take up management positions, there's, there's been a little bit of a, a challenge there. And then obviously the, you know, increase in COLA from year over year, it's, it's one of those things that you can't see tangibly, but really affects our bottom line. So just kind of keeping that in mind. And then the social services obviously is something that we heard a lot about in 2020, but I think it's important for us to have a, an overview in mind where, you know, we've partnered with the family center for a, for a half-time social worker. The police, the parks are working on it and spending their hours dealing with this issue. But then also we've got Chief Harris and this community paramedic pilot program that it will kind of, all of these be working together. And I guess my concern is, you know, these are all really important elements to address our communities, our, the needs of our community. But it, it becomes a larger and larger kind of endeavor. And at what point are we going to max out Joanne, right? And the, and that department that, and she's working so hard. At what point are we going to need some more administrative time, place? So, so how do we work with the family center? Is that a partner? And how far can we max out that organization? And when do we have to kind of create, you know, where is it going? And just having that kind of a master plan, which we're working on hacks. But I think people, the rest of the council should be aware that, you know, that where, where does that stop? Um, then I, the Sharp's Corner property is one of those things that it is isolated, which I think is what everyone kind of feels that it's, that is a hard thing to consider for residential development. But when we talk about where we're at and the fact that housing is so expensive because we don't have vacant land. This is the one location where the city has control, where we have vacant land. And it's currently not on the tax roll for, for property taxes. So, so it wouldn't, you know, that is a big thing. And, and really look moving forward for the next year and kind of exploring what options there are to have, you know, dense housing, kind of diverse incomes and a mixed use. It's not ideal, but I think if we had, we should explore what the, those possibilities are. And then finally, what was the last one? Ladder truck and station three is obviously really important. Will it go on this budget? Maybe not, but I think it's something that we need to start planning for and saving for. And then finally, you know, fiber is, I feel like we've got a group of people who are on the fiber committee who have a better understanding of it than me. But I like the idea of setting goals and then working backwards. It's how we are going to achieve those benchmarks. And when it comes to Socrata, transparency is incredibly important. I just want to see us balance the cost of that transparency and make sure that it's serving not just council, right? And staff, but that it's a program and an investment that benefits the community too. And so kind of balancing out that cost versus the number of folks that are, are able, that are using it, right? And, and be conscious of that. Cause you know, $30,000 a year is, is adds up. So those are kind of my high level and I know I missed a few things, but just thinking in the long run has came to mind. So thank you.
Okay, Jeremy.
Yes. So I talked to Steve a little bit about double tapping on a lot of things, but just briefly, a couple of my things is public safety is always going to be number one for me. You know, especially from what I do and a lot of what's going on around the country and what's been increasing around the area and our population going up. So public safety, not just police, but fire. And then also seeing a lot of what's going on over near the skate park and the homelessness. So social services and I, I don't know how in depth, but something to kind of help those guys get into a better situation. I don't know if that's going to be with the family center or elsewhere. Then again, fiber, just getting that done to out to the entire island. I know we're already on track for that, but that's something that's top. The Tommy Thompson train, I know it's going to come up again, now that the Anacortes group has kind of pulled out. I don't necessarily know or agree with or know how much the city itself should put in because I know it's going to turn out to be a bigger financial burden than what we're already planning, you know, eventually hiring someone. So the right thing to do there, I'm not sure yet. And then also pavement overlay and just getting the roads. So obviously that's always what everyone sees when they come into town and they're always complaining about. And I had one other thing, but I can't remember what it is right now.
Okay, you can circle back then. Thank you. All right, Ryan.
Uh, thanks. Steve, you might want to stop sharing so that we can see everybody and read less of your email.
Very good.
Among other things, I think that we ought to try again to focus on capital facilities planning. I, I've been banging this drum for a number of years and I don't feel like we've gotten it right yet. We've made progress in advancing towards a capital facilities element that's consistent with GMA. But then I've also read in some of the department memos that some qualm with how the capital facilities plan is structured. So, you know, we are supposed to have a capital facilities element in our comp plan to make sure that we accommodate development so that we can make sure that we have the roads and intersections and stormwater and things that we need. Or we shouldn't be allowing for the development that's allowed for in our comprehensive plan. Now we've already made choices in our comprehensive plan, for example, for MJB or for the affordable housing that we hope to see in our commercial core. But if we have constraints in our stormwater system or our sewer system that prevent that development from occurring, we won't get the results we want. And this is not a hypothetical problem. We have constraints, for example, in our stormwater system that are preventing some development from occurring at a reasonable cost, which either prevents the development or it, or it increases the cost of the development. So I think we again, need to take a hard look at our capital facilities plan and get that built up into a way that is really functional, both for the public, for council, for the departments. So that we're managing those capital facilities. I, I think that that is the way that you bankrupt a city is to not plan for capital facilities. We, eight years ago had a $60 million deficit in deferred maintenance and pavement management. And you don't see that in the budget. Budget looks balanced. But we had that real deficit and we've made real progress on that now. But we do have this problem in other sectors where the problems are, are invisible to us without a proper capital facilities plan. So I think we need to work on that. We also need to, given this projected, and I'm really grateful for the projections, the projected decrease in water utility revenue, we need to think carefully about regional water utility expenses. And maybe we don't do things that are nice to have even in the regional water utility, which usually has a lot more cash. I think generally we need to think about things differently. The pandemic demonstrated that we can do things differently. We can be efficient, we can be effective. And the only thing that was holding us back was our own preconceptions about what we could do. So we need to make some investments and I think most of this we can actually do during 2021 with our American Rescue Plan funds. But we need to make investments in new technology, tablets for the field, better tech in our council chambers for hybrid meetings, better tech for people working from home, better tech for citizen, citizen self-service, which probably ends up meaning replacement of our Eden system. And that's not a one-year proposition, but it's something that we needed to be planning for because it's already a system that's basically at end of life. And then our paramount importance ought to be security of all this tech. So I want to make sure that we're making the investments there. One thing that we haven't talked about, maybe almost ever, is the financial policies that are in the budget. Cause we don't see those at the time of budget adoption, but they're in the annual budget documents. And I think that those could use some update. I think that we should schedule a session or two, maybe first in finance committee, but then in full council to revisit those. The existing policies have some good stuff in there. They're not in plain English. And there's a lot of commentary. I think generally fewer words is better. And if we can narrow those down, we can maybe focus in on them. So for example, there's a policy in there that one-time revenues should be used for one-time expenses. if we can narrow those down, we can maybe focus in on them. So for example, there's a policy in there that one-time revenues should be used for one-time expenses, which is great. I mean, that's precisely right. But for example, the revenue that we got from sales tax for the new $90 million high school wasn't necessarily put toward one-time expenses. And that was an opportunity, I think, for us to do something a little different there. We should also have policies requiring us to disclose affirmatively to council and the public where we are deferring scheduled maintenance. We can make those choices, but we need to make them really publicly and deliberately. I think we should look for some deliverables out of this meeting today, maybe a determination on pavement management. It sure seems like we've got council members almost unanimous on fully funding pavement management at at least the 1.8 million that we had previously set, maybe higher. But if we could start from a platform of just funding it at our resolution set amount, I think that would be great. ERNR, I think, is another open question. I'm very hesitant to not fund ERNR, at least at the annual rent amounts during 2022, because it's just so easy to not fund it there. And we will, it will always be easy to not fund ERNR. The hard choices are probably in cutting expenses. The fire station and the ladder truck, I don't think we need to fund those. But we need to save for those so that we can fund them in some date certain. I'm hopeful that we get a cost estimate for Fire Station Three during 2021 in time enough that we can build it into the budget. But, you know, I would like to be able to say in 2025 or 2024, whatever date we pick that we're going to build that fire station and in the absence of any grant revenue to do it, we should save up a third or a fourth or, you know, whatever timeline is required to get that done. Because we've been kicking that can down the road for quite a while now. On social and community services, we have deep and serious needs in our community, and we're seeing that on the street. We're also seeing that through our investigation in the Hacks Committee. And my strong hope for 2022 is we come up with a different acronym for the Hacks Committee. But I think that there is also the possibility of new revenue at no additional cost to the Anacortes taxpayer for us to fund some of those social services. And that was our charge in the 2021 budget was to explore it that way. So I want us to keep doing that and see what we can do before we commit to other funds. On fiber, our residents want it. Some of them really need it. We should deliver it soon. And I think that we do have targets in terms of what the fiber department has already laid out. I'm concerned that the fiber department may not be able to achieve those targets because of the more difficult nature of the coming installs being them being underground instead of overhead. And I I think that they can make the case for more staff, a limited term staff, that would help us get there faster. If we get the bill done sooner, we will have more revenue to cover the fixed costs that aren't going away. So I think that that makes financial sense. And then finally, when when we look at going forward, I don't want us to just restore property tax allocations. I don't even really like the 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 concept of a property tax allocation to a given department. I think that departments all have needs. We all have staff needs. We need staff in order to get things done. But we also need to make choices. So I I want those choices to come forward in the budget process to city council and and that there not be an expectation that a certain slice of the property tax revenue goes to a particular department. Instead, I think that those allocations ought to be every year based on need and based on our our existing expenses. And I think that that's part of doing things differently than we've done before.
Ryan, well, it's 10:15. And Steve, why don't we take like this a couple of minutes? Stand up, stretch, get a cup of water, and then we'll come right back in. Okay?
Sounds good. Five minutes.
Five, five. You're very generous. I don't know what you got on your finger there, Anthony, but okay, let's get going. It's 10:21. And we've heard now from the council and what your goals and for this next budget cycle are. And Steve is going to step in at this time. I think he wants to do some clarification on a few things. And then he'll run us through the rest of our discussion this morning as we get into department budget discussions. Mr. Houghlin.
Thank you, Mayor. So one thing that I wanted to, I'm going to jump back over to this this other screen. At risk of sharing my email again. But so one of the things that council seemed pretty consistent on, and just please correct me if I'm wrong here. So this fully funding the pavement management program. I wanted to spend a little more time talking about that before we move on. What we have in the budget for this year, 2021. So remember back to 2020 during the COVID budget amendment, we reduced the pavement management program by essentially all of the property tax that was allocated to fund 104, which is the road maintenance fund. It's in the 600,000 to 700,000 range, and we transferred all of that back to the general fund to support general operations. So what we have done now in this current year, the 2021 budget, the pavement management plan is funded back up to 1.8 million, but that 700,000 in property tax is still funding the general fund. We made up that difference with real estate excise tax. So we have two buckets of REIT, REIT one and REIT two. There's a few more restrictions on REIT two. But none of those apply to transportation. So we can use all of our REIT on on that that pavement program if we want to. So it's going to be. So that's my question to you, council. Are you you have concerns with using REIT to continue fully funding pavement management? At least for the next several years. And we've got healthy reserves in REIT. We have about $3 million. If we continue to use, you know, 7 million a year to fund pavement management on top of what we collect in REIT, that could go on for some number of years. But if we go back to the original resolution that established pavement management program, that identified at that time about 600,000 in general money that would be used towards pavement management. And that general money was determined to be, for budgeting purposes, property tax. So our property tax has been supplanted by REIT. So when we're building the draft budget, my intent would be for 2022 to build that pavement management plan with REIT. So we have, you know, TBD money, we have the utility tax from solid waste that goes in there. And then real estate excise tax. So I want to hear councils, you know, concerns or lack of concerns about continuing to fund pavement management with REIT, at least for you know, the the short term. And so so the way I've been interpreting the the budget, the budget discussions we've been having the last couple of years, the last few years, has been that fiber has been our you know, kind of number one priority above and beyond what our normal operations are. So and we're we're we've been funding we are working the fiber department out of the general fund. And that's why those additional resources in the general fund have been have have increased essentially. So there's there's a trade off there. I wanted you to be aware of it. I wanted you to be aware of it going in 2022. And if anybody has concerns about that, again, it's REIT, using REIT to fully fund our pavement management program. Maybe that doesn't make sense.
Yes, Steve, you know, I'm I'm not sure. I'm I'm ready to answer that question completely. But I I just want to say I appreciate you mentioning TBD, because I think we forget about the importance of TBD, especially as a, you know, as a citizen voted issue to to fund that. So I I want to make sure you mention that on a regular basis. I know it's now tied to sales tax as opposed to to car tabs. And it so it follows along with our sales tax. But we need to make sure to always include that in our in our discussion of of pavement management. And also, what I didn't point out in my memo was the PCI measurement. And the reason I put that in there was to make sure, you know, I I believe it's the gold standard of the road engineers and and it does generate that $60 million number. But I think as part of that process, in order for us to make intelligent decisions about what we spend, we probably need an update on that on that kind of, you know, that that PCI, that PCI number. Because it's probably been several years since we really had that discussion and and a technology changed. So that I think needs to be part part of the part of the question to us is is making sure we we get a new up, an update probably on our street situation. Sorry for that. That was a little long-winded.
Yeah, it makes perfect sense.
On the on the question of spending the REIT, I think we need to be mindful of the statutory constraint on how much we can spend on maintenance. And do you have a sense of that?
I don't. I'm sorry. I'm I don't know that I'm familiar with this statute that you're Oh, are you you're, I'm sorry. So you're talking about the 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 amount of the amount of work that the city can do internally versus what it's required to contract out.
No, the the portion of REIT that we're allowed to spend on maintenance versus new capital projects. Would we consider the pavement management maintenance? I I'm assuming that we would.
Yeah. So actually, so the way I read the RCWs is that 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 would not be considered maintenance. As there's a there's a reference in the use of REIT to construction, reconstruction, construction and reconstruction. So I've I've thought of our pavement management as being more reconstruction rather than you know, maintenance, whereas I guess I have interpreted that as being like crack ceiling and things of that nature being maintenance that REIT wouldn't be, you know, that that would have that limitation that you're referring to.
Okay, so so as long as we're complying with that statutory constraint and putting things in the right boxes under that statute, REIT is more restrictive than general fund dollars. So I don't know why we wouldn't spend the most restrictive funding source first. I mean, that's one of those financial policies and and generally accepted priorities. So we have in the past used REIT as match for capital projects, you know, like 12th and Commercial Roundabout. And we need to retain some funding for projects where grants come up and we are able to secure those grants so that we can so that we have the match available. But that could that match could come from general fund. I mean, if we have prioritized pavement management to the extent that we have, I would think that we would prioritize spending the most restrictive funding source associated with that first. And I don't I I mean, you posed the question, Steve, and I wonder if you might elaborate on why you would ask. Because because it's not restricting, you know, it's not spending a funding source that we could spend on a lot of other things, although certainly there are other things. It's it's not like spending general fund.
Right, right. That's a very good point. So so what I yeah, so the reason the reason I'm asking is it's not so much of if yeah, so if I can frame this. Yeah, so if I can frame this, I'm not asking in, in the framework of is council okay with spending REIT, you're maximizing REIT spending, but more of not allocating general monies to the pavement management as we, you know, initially identified in the pavement management program. And you're exactly right. One of our budget policies is to spend our most restrictive money first. REIT is more restrictive than general, than general monies. So maybe that's, maybe that's just a priority. Maybe I just need a little bit of a paradigm shift. That's the priority of structuring our spending plan, our most restrictive monies first. Once we run out of REIT, then we need to supplant or supplement with general monies which are less restrictive.
Okay. So I think I understand then your, your question at this point, and we might want to revisit the pavement management resolution as well because didn't it also include prilled sulfur money, which you're currently receiving none of. And I don't know, maybe there's some other revenues that have varied in their expectations over time or projections over time. So we might want to revisit that. I would not be opposed to spending more REIT because it's compliant with that financial policy. The reason I think we put general fund money into that resolution was so that we didn't say, because we were increasing from like 1.1 million a year to 1.8, so that we didn't say we were just going to supplant the revenue that we were getting before with this new revenue, that we were going to increase the pie. Not just change it from whatever it was before to our new TBD sales tax. But we've done that, you know, we, we have resisted efforts to ratchet us back to lower dollar amounts per year. And we're maintaining the 1.8, which I think is the, the primary objective. If we go higher, I'm not opposed to that, especially where we need to go higher for certain projects. You know, there are certain roads in town that have real problems. They're gonna cost more than 1.8. They might be the only project that we do in a year. And when we, if, if we had an effective plan for how we're gonna fund those. Maybe we don't do the management side, the 1.8 million in one year, save it up for a year and then do the particularly problem road. I'd be okay with that as well. And if we need that flexibility in the resolution, I'd be okay with amending it.
Okay. Well, I think, so the, the request from Mr. Miller about a PCI, PCI update as well. I think would work well. We can just make it a whole study session on our, our pavement management program. And so using, using, I guess with the, the approval of council to to use REIT to, you know, to get our, our pavement management program up to what we have told citizens that we're gonna do makes budgeting much easier in, in the general fund. So leaving that, you know, current 700,000 property tax allocation in the general fund. To, you know, to support current operations is, you know, especially the fiber program. Once we get a couple more years under our belt with fiber, we have, you know, a larger customer base. That'll, that'll free up resources and, and make that budgeting a lot easier.
Okay. Does that help, Steve?
Yeah. Okay. So that, that helps. I appreciate that. That was one of the things that I wanted to come away with today was some level of priority pavement management. You know, the continued fiber build out, the social services section. I, I think those. I think council has been pretty, pretty clear about that, at least in my mind, that, that those, all three of those things seem to be something that council expects to see in the 2022 budget.
All right.
Mayor Gere?
Yes.
No, no, I just, I just want to state for the record again that I'm very much in support of the pavement management, fully funding that as well as a couple of the others, the social services too. So even though it may not reflect on this, I really am supportive of that. And so I, and I think to Mr. Walter's original point about most of council, I do believe given this chart and my indication now, it's all of council. So I just really wanted to put that out. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's time to hear from the directors now, Steve.
Okay, so this, so this next spreadsheet here, I'm still sharing, still sharing my screen. So I tried to put together a similar, you know, a similar matrix showing the different departments and kind of the salient parts of the memos that they provided. And whether we're looking at, you know, anticipating some kind of a increase in the request or more of a status quo to the existing budget. So. So I maybe we can just kind of step through these. So with admin services and please counsel, if you've got questions, just call them out as, as we go. Department heads, please correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong on any of these interpretations. But if it's okay, I'll just go down the list that we have here. So starting with admin services. In fiber, the fiber department, we've got additional capital build out. So I know that they've got a big contract this year. We talked about that a little earlier. That in 2021, the contract or the, the contract that we have is going to be supported with the line of credit that we've got, but they're looking at additional build out next year. And then there was some additional conversation even already today about the level of staffing. Just to support fiber.
Could you zoom in again?
Just for clarification, and we'll be talking about it at the personnel committee meeting scheduled on the 7th and 12th. But two of the positions within, or excuse me, four positions that, that we're asking for within admin services, we're asking for in 2021 as opposed to 2022. But I want, I know that that has a longer term effect on the budget, and that's why I brought it up within the, within the materials.
Go ahead, Steve.
So. Sorry, Emily, do you have? Without having the memo right here and right here in front of you, I was wondering the, the level of, the level, level of build out for the, the 2022 timeframe. Has that been, has that been identified yet? Or is that still, is that still in work?
That's been identified. It's actually within the memo.
Okay.
So we're looking at 1,815 premises that will pass, and that's with the assistance of the EDA grant. And then also another 875, which is East of Annacopper, back to A Avenue.
So council, any questions about this, the, the existing build out plan or the FTE requests? So fiber information systems, so both of those, two FTE and one FTE respectively, coming to personnel committee later this year. And then of course that'll carry over into the following year. So court, public defender and HR.
Steve, can I just add one thing to, before you move on? What I'm looking for, I, I really do get the point of, you know, the need base. What I'm also looking in the future going forward is to understand one, the cost, the costs as it's associated with the build out. And then how comparing that to how we're doing on the revenues that we are generating in order to cover those costs. I, I just sort of think I want to see sort of a running tally this, at some point we match out and then we go forward. That would be very helpful for me. Thank you.
Anthony, if I may be so bold, during our monthly presentations to council, we are including that, that information. And we will be getting to the, the point where our operational expenses are being covered by, by our revenue. So we are getting that out on a regular basis for the public in the city council to, to see. We do think that that is important information as you're considering the, the continued expansion of the fiber program.
Point well, point well taken. What I was looking for though is to have them sort of side by side, just so we see where we are. And because I think they're in separate places and I just want to be able to compare them. Thanks, Emily.
So, I mean, we're gonna hear from the fiber department in a couple of seconds, right, Steve? Or do you want to discuss this right now?
Yeah, that was my, that was my thinking is right now.
Well, so, yeah, it just, just kind of on my point of the overview. Yeah, I, I support the, you know, off the top of my head, but we need a little more data like, I, I, you know, I know it's two installs a day. You can ideally put that to four installs, but we just need a little more, I, I need a little more math of, okay, two installs a day for a half a year. What is that? 250, you know, 250 new customers. It's not necessarily just premises passed. It's a little, a little more detail of, you know, okay, do, do we hit that target? The, and, and the target that, that Anthony just brought up, you know, how, when do we get to paying for it? And I know we're getting pretty close, but that's the kind of level of detail that, that I would need before supporting two additional FTEs. Even if they're temporary, you know, okay, two, like I said, two installs a year per, per day, approximately 250. 750 for a year. That gets us to 2,000 customers. That, that kind of math I think is, is pretty important.
So we have over 500 orders in the West End right now. And with the, if we're doing on average two installs a day, because they're underground installs, they're, they're much more time intensive. We, that, that would take a full year for us.
Gotcha. Yeah, that's, that's exactly the, the kind of math we need. But again, just for the benefit of this. Yeah. And again, I always say FTEs are forever, but in this case, they should not be forever because we're gonna get to the, the build out of fiber. And then we'll ramp that, ramp that down. Again, that, that's my thought. But yeah, I, I'm supportive of getting it ramped up as quickly as possible to generate those revenues in order to start, you know, paying, not only paying for itself, but then paying down the lots.
So in 2021, our revenue is forecast to be about $536,000. In 2022, we are expecting that to, to increase to $985,000.
So something I was thinking about this meeting too, I wasn't anticipating this being our last budget meeting with, with council. Things are, you know, we're early in the year, obviously very fluid at this point. And as we're establishing these expectations and budget goals for the year, I was hoping to get exactly the kind of feedback that we're hearing right now that I guess provides a little more focus on these areas that council wants more information on before we bring the, the draft to council. You know, the, the full draft budget. So that would be kind of my expectation that we'll, we'll circle back here in, in another month or two with council on some additional information on some of these priorities.
Steve, before you keep rolling on, I wonder, what is our expectation for the rest of this session? Are we planning to go to 11 o'clock or noon or beyond?
11:15 was what I had in mind, and I was kind of thinking the same. You know, the, the same format that we've been using. I wanted to at least touch on each of the departments. Make sure that any questions the council has on any of these department expectations are clarified.
So I would just suggest then that we not debate each individual one, I guess. I, I think it's, the discussion that we just had is very useful for demonstrating the level of detail that we need for each of these types of things as we move through. But we'll need to, we'll need to talk about them in depth later.
Steve, I have a suggestion. Maybe if we're done with admin services that, because we moved down your chart, did you leave your chart up? But every director kind of just hit a couple of highlights and have every director talk for a moment and then the council can ask questions. I don't know. What do you think?
Sounds good. That's great. Great idea.
And if we could keep it to three or four minutes, just hit your, the big highlights in your department because we've got your written, your written information in front of us. So.
Excellent.
Okay, go ahead.
Sounds good. So council, any other questions for admin services before we move on?
Can I just add some information on the information systems and technology? Because we didn't really address that. And I'll be real quick about this, but we're really working to increase the stability of our, our network altogether. And so this indicates that there's a one additional employee, but we are actually seeking in 2021, two additional IS technicians. One of those positions would be funded through the, the general fund. And the, the second position would be funded as a SCADA technician to assist with water and wastewater. And that would be funded 75% by regional water and 25% by the wastewater treatment plant. Long term, that may help us to be less reliant on QCC, QCC for the contracted work that we're doing with them. So I just wanted to, to mention that. And the good work that they're doing in terms of just creating a very, very stable and safe system. Thanks.
Okay. So I wanted to move on to fire now. So kind of at the, at the broad level, the fire department, the community paramedic program that we've talked about a little bit, a couple of council members, I think, mentioned that in in their notes. And then the capital requirements in the fire department, we understand. Station one and three, station three, we've talked about a lot. Station one is also in need of a remodel to get brought up to date. And then obviously the ladder truck. So something, when we talked about ERNR earlier, something I did not mention at that time. We brought our ERNR reserves up to 80%, you know, so thinking of all of our vehicles out there needing to be replaced, we had 80% of that cost already set aside. The exception to that is the ladder truck. The ladder truck was donated to the city. And at, at no point had that ever been incorporated into the replacement reserves. And that's still the case at this point. Chief Harris, is there anything that you'd like to add or clarify?
No, I think that, so Chief Kennedy's done a good job educating council on the personnel needs and the safety grant and those things. And then of course, the capital projects that we've touched on quite a bit. The other things in my memo, there's some, our small tools, minor equipment's a little bit small. I just kind of lumped a bunch of things together there under equipment. It's not huge costs, but it is things that we've neglected a little bit over the years that need to be kind of brought up. But it's, it's relatively small dollars overall in the budget. But no, other than that, we probably talked about wage compression, which was one of my notes, you know, on there. But other than that, there's not a lot to add. Other than with the community paramedic, I know I put 50% of an FTE in there. And that's gonna be the easiest sell is with Island Hospital. With that being said, we'll be reaching out to other agencies as well and try and reduce, you know, the amount to the city beyond below 50%. But I don't know what those are gonna be yet. We're pretty early in that research.
All right. Thanks, Steve. So in the legal department, council will remember that we have added an FTE this year in 2021. That was your budget amendment earlier in the year. The legal department was dealing with some significant workload issues. I believe that they have completed those interviews now. So with that additional FTE wrapped into the current 2021 budget. They're just looking at status quo in the 2022 budget. So any, any questions or concerns, thoughts about the legal budget, city attorney's office?
Mayor Gere? I guess I can just jump in. Thanks. I just, this is just a, a small note that I appreciate that the names of the people are on the flow chart because I, it's just nice to have a little bit of, it adds, it adds a human part of it so we can see who does what. I think that that's, that's really helpful in gaining more understanding of, of how the city works and who makes it work. So thanks.
Garcia.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Mayor Steve and council members. Yeah, there's, there's not much to add on the legal department budget except to thank council for allowing us to add the new position. Our, our final candidate's been chosen and he's actually starting next Tuesday. So the goal for, for the So the goal for, for the city attorney's office for the rest of this year in 2022 is going to be to take some of these programs that we've put into place in my time here, the contracts program, public records that are, that are being stretched because of the growing workload. And just make sure that we've got the redundancy and that those programs are as robust as they need to be, to be able to meet future demands. So we're going to kind of look inward a little bit. We're really looking forward to this new person. We think it will really help with workload management. And I'm very thankful to council for the support for the, for the work we do. So. That's all I have.
All right. Thanks Garcia. The next department down is library. So we mentioned this earlier, there were some cuts out of the 2020 budget that have, or out of the 2020 that carried over into the 2021 budget. There was, yeah, a little confusion about that. I'll go back to our, our payroll reports and clarify that. I'll, I'll send out a, an email to everyone about that to make sure we're on the same page about those FTE counts. So in addition to that, one area they were talking about is a teen area remodel. And this is something that we've talked about in the past, but hasn't completed yet. Is Jeff, is Jeff still on this?
Here. Yep.
Yeah, this was identified in, at the tail end of our strategic plan as a public need, creating a teen area that was kind of more enclosed. And we have some architectural plans that were drawn up by Underwood. And then this whole thing was kind of tabled. And what I'm hoping is just to put it back on the radar and potentially move forward with it in 2022. It would definitely require some fun, additional fundraising with the foundation and, and some grants as well. I am happy to share the plans that we have. Probably now isn't the time, but I'm happy to, to share anything we have going forward.
So one other area that Jeff mentioned in his memo, the training budget was trimmed a little bit during that COVID budget amendment and then carried forward into the current timeframe. So that's an area that they'll be looking to try and increase a little bit as well. Okay. Questions on library? So next department is museum. So again, museum had one of their, it's one of the part-time positions that was in the museum cut out of the budget. Again, I will double check our payroll reports, make sure that we're all speaking the same language as far as FTE. So, but what they'll be looking at is recovering that. And then some additional work needed on the Preston. Brett here?
Yeah, I'm here Steve and hello council and everybody. Yeah, just getting back our educator position for 2022 would be great. And then some, getting a start on some of the, the deck work that needs to be done to keep our national historic landmark, WT Preston, a preserved. That would be helpful and, and also would be part of future matches for some heritage grants that we would be applying for at the, from the state.
Excellent. Thank you. Council, any questions on museum before we move to parks?
Brett, what's the rough order of magnitude estimate of what you're asking for, for a deck repair?
Just a portion of what would be needed for a total deck repair. I would say it would be in the 25,000 level, just to get going on the project and with future requests as needed.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks Brett. So, so parks. So we talked about this a little bit earlier when we were talking about our, our FTE status. So in the initial 2021 budget, there was one position that was eliminated out of 2021. That was restored through a budget amendment earlier this year. The resources to fund that position though weren't increased. So that position, at least for the balance of this year, will be paid for with cash reserves. And that's what the, what this note is about, restoring that property tax revenue. So there's sufficient resources to support all of those FTE that are, that are currently budgeted. And then some additional capital. John?
Morning everyone. Thank you Steve. Morning council and mayor. So we're just trying to restore our staff to pre-COVID levels. We've lost three due to the hiring freeze. And so it's very understandable and our staff worked to cover that. So we're looking to budget this year to hire our senior center administrator, which we're in the process of doing, and the one FTE in parks maintenance that was planned. And as Steve just mentioned, bringing on the second parks maintenance that was frozen due to a position that retired in 2020. So we just are, you know, just trying to plan for the future to make sure that we can keep our staffing levels at the pre-COVID amounts that we had. So we can maintain the parks as the public expects. I mean, I'm sure you all recognize and realize that people, people went outside during COVID and the expectations were high. We saw our users go about 15, 20% in some places. And, and the community likes to see it maintained at a certain level. And so that's what we're trying to do is just maintain that level. That's, that's what we're looking at. We say increase is just returning to what we had prior. And in capital projects, the depot stage that you see there was a grant that unfortunately was not granted from the county. And we're working on the Trestle project with a match either from the US Army Corps of Engineers and/or the Samus Tribe is working hard on a match for us. We have our state money already allocated. So that's, that's what's going on there. If you have any questions, I'll happy, happy to try to answer them.
Mayor Gear? Yeah, no, I just really wanted to just make sure that John is looking to, in my opinion, increase the work that we're doing toward those that are over 50 and 60 in our town. And I think that that's about 40 plus percent of the population, so much a part of what the volunteer base is. You know, all of the clubs that are in town, the work that's done in town to help us be what we are. I just want to make sure that we're building a growing pot of money and resources that we're using toward encouraging that and growing that opportunity to do things at that senior level that I think is important in town. And again, you know, just the work that you're continuing to do with the school system too. I think that you need to be fully funded such that it's such an important part of life and recreation and enjoyment we do here in the town. So I don't want you to kind of cut back on that. I just really want you to push it forward and then we'll figure out where and how appropriate it is for the funding.
Thank you, Ms. Chang. I think with, as others mentioned, you know, with efficiencies, you know, we talk about that quite a bit internally. All city departments do, how can we be more efficient? And so as last year, we gave the sailing program to the, to the local clubs here and took it out of the city orbit. Now that Dustin South, our recreation manager, is capable of helping me move into more, helping our current center staff at the senior center do more work. And so that's more trying to create more efficiencies internally to meet budget needs there and to provide just more hands. So those are the things we're looking at internally. How, how can we improve what we're doing now to reach more people? So those are some of the things we can do. But in other places, we just still, you know, grass, grass grows and we have, we have to cut it. We have to, we have to meet those needs and that just takes a lot of bodies. So thank you for that question.
All right. Thanks John. Any other questions for parks before we move on? P C E D, planning, community economic development. So if, what Mr. Meesmer wrote up in his, in his memo, I put in here kind of a status quo in the planning and building department. But it's, it's dependent on some existing contracts carrying over. And then possibly looking at some different permitting software that would, that we could implement immediately, that would work with our current ERP system. Eden. So Mr. Meesmer, are you on with us? No?
I can't hear you.
Oh. Yeah, we can't hear you. Okay. Dang, what a bummer. So just outlining a couple of things that Don had on his, on his memo. There's carryover consulting contracts. In the Shoreline Master Program update, the watershed company, there's a possible carryover of about $15,000 into 2022. And then critical areas update with geo engineers. Over $13,000 should be completed in 2021. That's the anticipation, however, that may be a carryover as well. So pretty much, pretty much looking at a status quo budget in that, in that area. On the permitting software, we've talked about this a little bit. They, going through the, the COVID, you know, the COVID process and it, it's really exposed some weaknesses in the permitting software that the planning department is using. And that's one area we've been talking about trying to get up to speed sooner rather than later, rather than waiting for a fully ERP implementation to update that. I think he actually has something in mind that they've looked at, that they like, that will integrate with Eden, that they would like to get, get on board immediately. So those are conversations that will be, you know, taking place in the near future. It's possible that maybe that's a, a use of ARP money. You know, the expectation is that that would be around $100,000 for that software permit implementation.
Mayor Gear, I, I wanted to add one more thing to this planning and economic development side for Don and the team. You know, you and I, at least in some of our conversations, spoke a little bit about, you know, business recruitment per se versus E-DAS. But business recruitment for Anacortes, whether that's Sharp's Corner or small businesses, I think that we need to really consider making part of that investment. I know we are working to help the businesses that are here, help them expand, get them to stay alive coming out of COVID and going forward. But part of that, that we've been looking for, particularly as it relates to economic development, the income disparities that we're trying to get in at a certain level to be able to afford. I think that that's something that's important for our city. And I think we have a tremendous amount of wonderful people coming through our city, whether going to the San Juan Islands. If only 1% of them had businesses. And if we could target those that fit our, you know, the direction we want to go, I think we all benefit. And I think that that's just not something that should be on a back burner. I think that we should have a concentrated effort, just a little bit more progressive rather than not necessarily passive about it, meaning they reach out to us, but going after some of those businesses. And I just want to keep that on the radar too.
I, I agree with you, Mr. Young. And, and John has done an eloquent job of connecting people and resources. But quite frankly, it comes down to, you know, having someone that it's, can focus on that 100%. And we've never funded that position or felt like we had the ability to fund it. So that's a challenge moving forward on how we would do that. Because it's, it comes down to staffing, to do it in the way that I think you and I'd like to see. And then there's, you know, the budget and all that. Okay. Anything else?
My last point in that is I totally understand. And, you know, the only thing I'm just sort of putting out to council itself being that body that makes that determination is that same position and that economic benefit rolls over to every single thing that we're talking about here in this budget. And so that's an investment forward. Thank you.
Good point. Thank you very much. Okay, Steve, I'm back at you.
Okay. So in the police department, Chief Small had a couple of, a couple of items identified that would be an increase to the existing, the existing budget. Chief, are you?
He is.
On the line?
I'm here. Yes, I am. Good morning, everyone. Good, it's good to see your faces. Yeah, a couple just real general things for the group, I guess, today though. And one of them is House Bill 1223 was passed earlier this year, requires us to record custodial interviews with certain adults and all juveniles in the future, though by January 1st of this year. So, so basically we are going to need body cameras. And probably, you know, by the end of this year, if not sooner than that though too. This is maybe even be a 2021 issue, not, not a 2022 issue though. So we are starting the research now, what, what that might look like for the companies out there and the cost of those cameras and policies and all those things that would come into play there too. So that will be a big, big thing for technology for our department in the coming months though. So. Also, we talked about a little bit earlier down, the social service partnership with the Anacortes Family Center. You know, that, that's a huge thing for us, a very good program. And we need to expand that in the future though. You know, what, what, what it looked like, whatever, you know, and what, what might that, I can talk here. What might that cost for people there too? So, but again, a good program, you want to continue those partnerships with the community, you know, expand those things if you can there too, I believe anyway though. Mr. Miller also mentioned 28th officer adding to our staff. And I agree with that. Loved our 20th full-time police officer position added. Give us some flexibility for maybe a second SRO if possible, or maybe a connected person with a mental health professional possibly again for our social service program. I think that'd be a great thing to have. And also our animal impound is a little, we don't know what's going to happen with Dr. Anderson's office right now. He's still working thankfully, you know, a great program for us, great resource for our department there too. But there's talk of possible retirement in the future potentially though. And the hospital owns that property. And what do we do after he retires though? We can make a decision on that probably in the future sometime or two. But I'm open to questions and comments and concerns about any of these things. And it's going to be a busy budget here for APD as we progress down the year though.
Hey, Chief Small?
Yes.
Yeah. Hey, so we've had a couple of conversations before, I think, the House Bill passed. Can you just elaborate a little bit about when it comes to the body cams? Kind of the storage of the, of those files? And then when there's requests, kind of like the man hours that are going to go into kind of managing that? Because I feel like that's going to come along, a budget request along with the actual equipment.
Right. So one of the things on my, my mission request too is probably a, a halftime records person. You know, we're kind of being told in general terms that for smaller departments, you know, we need to have at least have a halftime person for handling all the public disclosure requests. And in the media, just the redacting of things or two for those requests though. Large departments probably a full-time or two for those requests though. So it's a big, big investment, I guess, in that program though. So storage costs are huge. Those are monthly fees, you know, whether you're the cloud or whatever. But that's, you know, we're hearing the initial numbers of maybe $300,000, you know, if you buy cameras initially and storage fees. And of course, the companies are coming out, we're going to have to slide cameras and stuff down. And there's different platforms and levels you can get a service there too. You know, from Cadillac, top of the line down to the budget versions there too. But, but storage is a huge cost. The processing of those images and videos are huge, a huge, you know, concern to us there too. We have to have policy on these things and the people that manage, you know, the, the video there too. So we know we will get many, many requests for video when that's the tool for our department.
Back to that unfunded mandate thing.
So Chief, I, I really appreciate your description here of HB 1223 and the impacts on the department and what you're going to have to do. I, I don't see that mentioned, I don't think, in the, in the administrative services department. But it seems like that's going to be a big effort from IS to support that. I, I think it's worthwhile, you know, I, I, I think it'll, it'll, it'll be really useful for the department. When I was a prosecutor, it was definitely useful to have video, which we had from a number of agencies. I, I don't see in your memo, and assumedly that would come later, but I don't see a justification for the 28th commissioned officer. You know, there's just a line that mentions it. So I would be looking for that. I mean, I would be looking for that from every department wanting to add staff. But also, a particular proposal for exactly what that would be, if it's the second SRO or pairing with the APD or whatever it is you want to pursue there. Go ahead.
So I appreciate that. I'm, you know, we're looking for comments from the public, too. What, you know, what do you want to see from the police department in terms of our, our service to the community, though, you know, what's a priority to the council and the community, though? So
And we had also heard from the fire department on the HACS committee that they were looking at an, an effort to redirect, you know, nine-one-one calls that are for, there are people that have frequent service needs. People with some level of, of mental health problem or other related problem that just results in a lot of nine-one-one calls and redirection of those calls to a service provider other than the fire department or other than the police department, because they're really not emergency response needs. And that strikes me as a really useful thing to explore. Because I think you made the point last year about how much time is consumed by calls that don't necessarily need a police response, plus all the calls that do need a police response. So I, I, I hope that police and fire will bring together some suggestions in that area. In addition to or in replacement for a twenty-eighth commissioned officer, either way, however it checks out.
I'll give you an example right now, but just with that one. On my screen right now, though, is for the last two and a half hours, we've got our sergeant and officer tied up with a disorderly subject downtown, you know, that's a mental health issue. So our three-person daytime staff today, too, those people are tied up for two and a half hours with that one person, you know, so they are very, very time, you know, intensive, though, with those types of calls.
Yeah, and that, and that's what I briefly talked about, John, with, you know, from the impact teams, the Skagit County Sheriff's Impact Team, and whether that can fill that, whether they will be able to fill the gap if they have additional folks, you know, they've got three now. They think they're gonna get budgeted for two more, and that may, may overcome our geographic challenges of being out here on the west side. So, you know, that, that, that could have been a perfect situation for potential impact team. Because the nine-one-one dispatchers are starting to get used to that possibility of dispatching an impact team type individual vice, a police officer. So that, that could have been a good example of free up your officers, get an impact team working that issue. So, yeah, I, I, I don't know how that's gonna, that, I guess I bring it up because how, how that might impact the budget. Is it better to, you know, try to work that piece into, you know, the social, the social worker aspect? Again, I still support the family center funding. But how can we draw potentially the, the county resource?
Right. And Chief, we, we heard I just, Chief, I just wanted to add one point to what you were saying. I totally understand how, you know, it is about this funding giving HB one, one, two, two, three. And that our police department is just really stellar. And under your leadership, it has been absolutely wonderful. But the reality is that in parts of the country, we're not having the same type of force that we have here. And body cameras, unfortunately, seems to be a solution to root, helping to root out some of those issues that are not good policing. And, and I'm sorry that it's really affecting everybody's budget that way. But the reality in the country is that there are some parts of this that we really have to deal with. And short of any other solution, Chief, I, I wish that there was another one, and I wish that it didn't impact us and our budget, budget, the way that it does. But the reality is that it's happening over the country, and we really need to root it out and get to the bottom of it.
I agree, Mr. Young, with, with you, too, there, you know. And for the public listening today, too, I want them to know that, you know, we are not afraid of body cams as our department. It's gonna show you PD officers doing the right thing ninety-nine point nine, nine percent of the time, I think, though, you know. So we, we support that, that resource, though. And like Mr. Walter said, it's a great tool for prosecution in the future, though, hopefully, though. So it's the biggest concern, it's always been the cost. It's, it's expensive to have, to have cameras. And, and, you know, and, and pay for the storage fees and all those things that come with that, though. And create a policy, though, too, is also a big thing, you know, we're really specific policy on, on cameras, though, too. But it's coming our direction, you know, and we're gonna embrace that and we're gonna, you know, research it and hopefully get plans for that in the future, though.
Yeah, we, we heard in the HACS committee that the, the impact team at the county is really a good approach. But I think the expectation is that they're really not gonna be able to help APD, because the county is just so vast. And even with three, four, five officers, you know, to cover twenty-four hours a day, that's, it's their priority to cover it twenty-four hours a day in the unincorporated area rather than the cities. So it sounds like that approach is what we ought to emulate in some cases, but we probably can't rely on the county.
It's been a great program for them. We've had a real mixed bag of successes, again, responding to Anacortes, though. You know, sometimes people are in too much crisis or not enough crisis, you know. Seems to be a real small box where they'll actually come over, you know, a window and help us out, though, sadly. Again, a great program, though, I'm not, not knocking the county by any means, though, but a perfect world for us, we'd, we'd have our own. Yeah, exactly. Again, that takes another officer, too, probably, and, and MHPs and, you know.
Yeah, just when it comes to sharing resources, I always use the dog example, you know, we have a, we, we have a canine unit and we share that resource. So again, opportunities to share those law enforcement resources across county, city boundaries is not something we're, we're not used to. So, eh, eh, again, with more, with more impact teams, it's, it's a possibility just to factor in.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Thank you, Chief. So our last, last department I wanted to touch on before we break, Public Works. So at kind of the broad level, the high level, there's an additional facilities FTE and then fully funding pavement management, which we've talked about. And I put an X in both status quo and increase for the very reasons that we talked about already. I wanted to talk about continuing to fund with REIT or allocate more general money towards that. So I think we've at least answered a bit of my satisfaction. Missed field. Sorry about that. So is Mr. Buckmeyer on with us?
Yes, I think he is.
Think he is. Still, good morning. I'm gonna be real brief. There's six pages of stuff here and in about three or four minutes left. So I'll just hit the highlights. First of all, thanks for the council memos. Absolutely priceless. That's, that's exactly what I need to be able to focus and prioritize what we're, what we're doing. Kind of put together an eclectic group of budget-related issues, knowing that this was a twenty-thousand-foot view and we were gonna get another chance to look at this. And tried to kind of group them in, in things that made sense. Fully funded maintenance, pavement maintenance program. Thank you very much for that. That's great. There was a little bit of a, a discussion about maybe increasing that. That, you know, has complexities. We try to, not try, we always fix our utilities before we pave, so utility prices would go up a little bit. To do that, we have to fix our ADA system. So if we increase that, that means more ADA money. So just that. There, we do get regular PCI pavement condition ratings. We share those with Public Works Committee, but I can certainly share those with full council and, and, you know, let everybody see that. And if there's another matrix we're gonna measure against, well, I'm, I'm happy, I'm happy there, too. So let's see, we talked a little bit about, there was some talk about identifying infrastructure issues with, you know, and having that be a hindrance to, to housing. And that's just to, in order to do that, we need a modeling, right? So water models, stormwater model, sanitary model, you'll see budgeting in there for those those issues inside there, inside of my memo. Let's see, jump into the sanitary sewer projects, you know, the next year is gonna be the, the outfall and the beginning of our discussion for the solids handling. Stormwater projects, there, there's some funding in there for a stormwater model. Road construction, you know, I threw some kind of those road projects that are on the list, but I don't want them to be forgotten in there. Are they gonna be done next year? No, but I just want to make sure everybody's aware of those. Let's see, GIS, we have, also have a new staff member starting, GIS staff member starting on the twenty twenty-first of June, I believe. So we, we appreciate that. Rob appreciates, appreciates that. We'll introduce her to the, to the group when that happens. Gosh, water, water distribution, water distribution, probably the, the big push coming up is trying, is extending our telemetry system out to the south Fidalgo Water System when we acquire that, or maybe even a little before we acquire it, because there's some overlapping benefits there. Also, at the water plant, we got the risk and resiliency report that came out that, you know, we will have a capital facilities plan and a budget to try to correct those deficiencies, catch those things. We're still having struggling, meeting our staffing requirements at the water plant. And that's not due to wages at this point. We believe we have our wage levels out there are right up to par. There is just a lack of level three and level four water treatment plant operators. So spoiler alert, Emily, you're gonna, your requests come from me to maybe go with that outside source to maybe use the word headhunter, but maybe somebody that can look for stuff out of the state of Washington. That might be what it takes. Facilities, that's gonna be a big, a bigger hit this year. We've got some big things in there. We've got an elevator upgrade here at City Hall and a couple of major roof replacements. And Mac, Mac's always quick to have me let everyone know that this thing is being run with one, with one FTE. Since they've relocated out to the operations building, there is a, a bigger group of people that we can, that we borrow from out there. So that, that, that's helping. But he just wants to be to keep it in front of everybody that, you know what, it's one person doing all this. And, you know, operations, a lot of stuff there, but the, probably the biggest one is we're, we're gonna be requesting or recommending that we backfill those exist, that existing street crew vacancy. And how did I do? Yeah, four minutes, not bad. Questions?
I, I just, I just want to put in a plug for that stormwater modeling effort. You know, you've got it listed here at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That is such a worthwhile investment. Because new development and including new businesses, you know, that we want to attract, has to pay those costs and they all pay it. And it slows everything down. And then they pass that cost on, you know, in terms of housing. Or maybe they don't locate here if they're a business, if, you know, they can't get that, that type of stuff figured out. We're doing this with traffic. And it makes sense to do it with the other utilities as well. So I'm very supportive of that. On facilities, we used to have more than one FTE for facilities, didn't we?
Well, probably a, a better conversation offline, but Mac and Brandon are the only facilities, you know, dedicated facilities of staff. And Mac has recently taken on, on the assistant operations role also, which somewhat diminishes his ability to do hands-on stuff.
Okay, so maybe more conversation there. I, I do think it's important, though, that all that facility work be directly tied to the capital facilities plan. I, it, it seems like we've seen some upgrades to City Hall that aren't driven by the capital facilities plan, maybe in the last year. And I'm over, overall, I'm just a little concerned about that.
Mayor Garrett, I really, yeah, no, I just really want to echo the, one of the points that Mr. Buckmeyer brought forward about the real, sort of indicating the reluctance to open the pool up beyond the local candidates. I am very much a supporter of local candidates, but I think that as a city and as we are a growing area with people locating here from everywhere, unless we do that, we lose the opportunity to bring in different talents that may be other places here. Yeah, you know, here looking for that same opportunity. So I'm really going to, going forward as we have our personnel meeting with Ms. Xu coming up. I'm really gonna have conversations about ensuring that that's a part of the natural process of how we go about recruiting. There are a tremendous amount of people that want to live here like myself. And there are others that are here looking for jobs that may be able to bring something to the table that we find useful. So I just really want that to become part of the undergirding principle of how we go forward as a city. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Our, just for what it's worth, our GIS candidate is coming to us from Utah.
One last point, Mayor. That was always a joke between Fred and myself about that. And, you know, my joke was, we were just trying not to become West Virginia.
All right, Steve.
Well, thank you, everybody. That's, that was kind of what I had planned. We're bumping up against eleven thirty now. So a couple of areas that I heard that council would like a little more information on, maybe a little more focused information. Transportation, our budget policy arena, the fiber. And the fiber build-out plan. So if there are other ideas, other thoughts, please don't hesitate to email those to me or call me. And then we'll plan on circling back here in, in a little while, a few weeks or several weeks. I will be gone for the next week and a half, but I'll look forward to talking to each of you when I get back.
Well, I, I want to thank you, Steve, for your leadership in this. And I, I, I believe going into this budget session, we all have a much clearer idea of what the priorities are and where we need to go. And a very useful time this morning. Okay, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thursday. Hey, take care. Bye.
Mayor, I'm gonna call you on your office.